Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our council work session for August 21st. We've got a couple of items on the agenda this morning. We're going to talk about Reflect DSM and then we're going to talk about the Youth Advisory Board. Ms. Manager, any quick comments? Let's get going.
No, we can get going. We can bring up...Jason, I think, gets to kick us off here.
Morning. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Van Essen, planning and urban design administrator. This morning...switch over to the presentation. All right, thank you. Visit with you a little bit about an item that's on your agenda tonight and will be on the following agenda. So tonight you have a set date of hearing for the adoption of Reflect DSM. It's the city's new historic preservation plan, citywide plan. It's been...let me see if I can...there we go. Every computer is different, so it's like, okay. There we go. Sorry, Mike. You know, this is really an effort that we've been working on for a couple of years now. Started with looking for grant funding to help us pay for this. We were able to secure a CLG grant from the State Historic Preservation Office to help with this effort. But really, it's really something that...something that should have been done for some time. There's a lot of changes happening in Des Moines. You can see that we did our first historic preservation plan in 1995, so lots changed since 1995. Demographics of the city have changed. A lot of buildings that we now consider historic weren't historic at that time, so mid-century modern and those kinds of things. The other thing of note is really kind of the dialogue nationally that's going on in historic preservation and really looking for opportunities to expand and think beyond maybe the traditional scope of historic preservation, which really is focused mostly kind of on male and high-end architecture kinds of scenarios, but really thinking a little bit broader than that, thinking a little bit more culturally, thinking a little bit more about intangible history, how things, how events and different people and our own experiences intertwine with the built environment really create a sense of place and really a foundation for preservation. And when you bring those two thoughts into it, it also allows for kind of expanding the pool of those that are involved in historic preservation and think about the things that they are concerned about in the city or proud of, but often don't have the language or the tools or the understanding that this notion of historic preservation is really a house for their thoughts on their community to live in as well. This is just a quick synopsis of the process and timeline. I'm going to turn it over to Stacy Hanley. She's an urban designer with our staff. She was the project manager for this, came on board about a year ago, right when we were starting to kick off the public input process and really got us going. In the vein of the thinking differently about historic preservation, we also took this as an opportunity to think a little bit different about our processes, how we go about planning, trying to broaden our reach, move beyond just the traditional open house format of gathering input. So we did some unique things that Stacy's going to talk a little bit about with getting folks to go out and kind of interview their own community for us and then coming back and working with our advisory committee, some unique survey tools, and then, of course, some traditional meetings. Still have to have those as well. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Stacy. And then we'll both be available for questions at the end.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. Thanks for having us here today. We're really excited to talk about this process. So I'm going to walk you through our planning process. And as Jason mentioned, we did do some new and innovative tactics to reach out to the community in new ways and really push the envelope on looking at things through an equitable and inclusive lens. This is a graphic with a timeline component that shows all the different modes of public participation and outreach we conducted. Some of those throughout the process include focus groups, listening sessions, meetings with our advisory committee and the outreach coordinator cohort, which I'll talk more about in a bit, public workshops, two online surveys, and an open house. The two key groups we met with throughout the process were the advisory committee and the outreach coordinator cohort. The advisory committee was a group of 17 community leaders, and we had four total meetings with that group throughout the process. We met with them throughout key stages. We were seeking input and guidance, providing documents for their review, and they were really a critical point of feedback throughout the process consistently. And the outreach coordinator cohort was our more innovative way to do outreach. This ended up being a group of eight members. Our original attempt was to get closer to 12 to 15, but it was difficult to find a group of people that were willing to commit the time and effort to this, but the group we did find was truly committed and we loved working with them. This group ended up being three adults and five high school students. We had a stakeholder recommend we reach out to high school students as a way to get some more activity with this group. And so we reached out to the Hoover High School IJAG program, and we were able to work with the teacher of that program, who became one of our outreach coordinator cohort members as well, and then five of his students. And so throughout this process, we did a formal training with the consultants where we gave them the framework in which to go conduct peer-to-peer interviews in their community. Doing feedback in this format versus an open house that's led through consultants or city staff, it results in a more honest and open dialogue to talk about things like what you value in the community, how you feel about historic preservation. So these interviews were collected in January, and then we met with the outreach coordinator cohort again in the spring. So it was a two-part commitment. And then in the spring, they were to review the documents and make sure the feedback that they heard appeared in the document. At this point, we did combine some of the meetings with the advisory committee and the outreach coordinator cohort. And this was an example of how we were using this more innovative process with this outreach coordinator cohort. This was a new, somewhat experimental method of getting public participation. It hadn't been tested in many other communities. And when we brought the outreach coordinator cohort and advisory committee together, there was a lot of dynamic interaction, and both groups took away so much from those interactions. The advisory committee was really inspired to see the work that this younger generation was doing and get their input on how historic preservation is working in Des Moines. And then the outreach coordinator cohort was really inspired to see these community leaders at work in their community. So it ended up being a really dynamic and exciting part of the process and one that we think the consultants will probably take forward to future communities. So Des Moines was really paving a new method of interaction with the community and a way to get equitable and inclusive feedback in this public participation method. So we're really proud of what resulted from that. And I do want to mention that the outreach coordinator cohort, this was a paid position, so they received payment in two forms in the fall and then in two separate instances in the fall and the spring. We wanted this to be an opportunity that was not just volunteer-based and that we were paying for their time as a part of our focus on equity. Throughout the feedback process, we did consistently ask this question: What places, events, stories, et cetera, have been lost, almost lost, or not appreciated? This is an example of a compilation, a graphic that compiles all the information we heard on this question throughout the entire process. The words that appear largest are what we heard most often, and as the words decrease in size, those are the words we heard less often. This is taking that same question again and showing some of the physical places in the city that we heard about, and then we located them on the map. Some of these include the Weather Beacon Hotel...excuse me, Fort Des Moines, Gray's Lake, Center Street, World Food and Music Festival, and the Evelyn K. Davis Park. Now I'm going to walk you through the structure of the plan. Chapter one talks about the plan framework. We had a vision statement for this plan, which is "Des Moines values and respects the intangible heritage, intangible places that reflect all its histories to create a vibrant and sustainable community where everyone belongs." We also had a mission statement, which describes how to achieve this vision, and we also had three overarching goals. Goal one is to be equitable and inclusive. We want to create an equitable and inclusive preservation program that recognizes and protects all histories and cultures of Des Moines. Goal two is to be community-centered and engage the residents of Des Moines in historic preservation, empower them to save their history, valued places, and heritage. And goal three is to be strategically integrated. We want to infuse historic preservation into other city departments and planning initiatives and work closely with other departments that touch historic preservation activities. As a part of our equity and inclusion work, we created an equity statement, and this was done with the help of the advisory committee and outreach coordinator cohort. And it has three parts to acknowledge, reform, and operationalize the equity audit statement...excuse me, the equity statement. This work came as a result of the equity audit that we conducted as a part of our existing conditions report. The equity audit was an internal review of nine programs located in the Neighborhood Services and Development Services Department, and from that we created a report that informed the equity statement. We also felt it was important to recognize that the history of this area predates the founding of Des Moines, and so we have a land acknowledgement statement as a part of this document as well, and this is the first of its kind for the city of Des Moines. It's located at the very front of our document, so it's the first thing people see when they open it. And we worked in collaboration with Sebastian Braun, Director of American Studies with Iowa State University, our consultants and the Equity Office of Des Moines. Chapter two is putting preservation to work in Des Moines, and here we go through the benefits of historic preservation, our partners in preservation, and we give an outline of the structure of the city of Des Moines with all of the city departments and elected officials that touch preservation work. Chapter three is the status of preservation in Des Moines, and this goes through the local landmarks, our local historic districts, our national historic districts. We also talk about incentives for preservation work and further partners and not-for-profits that do work in the preservation realm. And chapter four is where we really get into the bulk of the work and the actions that will guide us for the next 10 to 20 years, and this is the future of preservation in Des Moines. And we have some information keys that I'll go through that go along with each action to describe and further help city staff implement. So the first is the actions timeframe. Each action has a timeframe listed. We have near-term, zero to five years, midterm, five to 10 years, and long-term, which is 10-plus years. And we have a total of 74 actions. We also have this graphic that indicates which goal each action contributes to. Some actions contribute to one, some contribute to more than one goal. We indicate related actions throughout the document so that staff can easily coordinate in the future the actions which work well together. And we also list our lead and partner agencies for each of the actions. And I'm going to walk you through a handful of actions, some in our near, mid, and long This first action is for survey work, and when we mean survey in historic preservation, that means going out in the community and collecting record of events, places, history, buildings. It's a lot of research and collecting of information. So we want to prioritize the research, survey, and designation of sites, events, and places that focus on stories of Black, Indigenous, and people of color, members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender community, houseless, and immigrants in Des Moines. And we want to do that in a community-led process, so that second one is to determine a methodology to directly engage citizens in the survey work. So we envision this being something that we get the community involved in and that this is a group effort, community-led. This contributes to the goal of being equitable and inclusive and community-centered. Another action in the near term is to improve and audit our Historic Preservation Commission internal processes to make the process easier for the public to navigate, easier to understand, and more efficient. So we'll do things like evaluate the current certificate of appropriateness process, make more items administratively approvable, which frees up staff to focus on more important items and more complicated certificate of appropriateness projects, and also makes it a lot easier for the public to navigate as well. And we also plan to eliminate the landmark review board so that local landmark nominations and alterations would be handled by the Historic Preservation Commission, making that an easier process for anyone who owns a local landmark as well. N8 is all about internal collaboration, so we want to increase collaboration between departments, do things like conduct regular meetings with department leaders, ensure regular communication with council about the achievements of the preservation program, and continue to collaborate with the Neighborhood Services Department. And this achieves the goal of being equitable and inclusive and strategically integrated. Moving into midterm, we want to look at additional creation of tools for the certificate of appropriateness process. So this is the main...this is the bulk of the Historic Preservation Commission work is issuing these certificates of appropriateness. And so we want to create some things that streamline the process for staff, including creating an internal database of projects that makes it easier for staff to review in the future and also to publish a simplified version of that database to the webpage so that when people are coming in for applications, they can easily look up projects similar to what they're doing. So if they're putting a deck on the front of...or on the back of their house, they can go and see who else has done this, what was included in the application, what kind of things should I submit, and it just makes the process easier for them. M6 is all about building community partners, so we want to continue to develop an informal contractors list, connect with the Des Moines Heritage Trust to determine partnership opportunities, and also continue to develop our small developers' network because finding developers that work at this small scale can be challenging for people. Moving into long-term, this is all about historic preservation outreach. We want to partner with stakeholders to create a historic walking tour program, establish an annual historic preservation awards program, and provide sources for hands-on preservation training by local groups. The next steps in this process, as Jason mentioned, tonight you will set date of hearing for the historic preservation plan, and then on September 11th, City Council will have the hearing to adopt the plan, and after that, we move forward with the exciting work of implementation. Thank you so much for your time, and are there any questions for Jason or myself?
Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Linda?
I have questions. Number one, I think you've got city council members that are sitting up here that have a whole bunch of history, and I was never contacted for any input into this plan whatsoever. Number two, I sat...I stood at Pennsylvania Avenue on a cold winter day with multiple city staff to talk about the steel curbs that were the only steel curbs in the entire city and said, "That is part of our history. We need to preserve that." And as far as I know, it never happened. Nobody paid any attention to preserving that part of history, and that's bothersome. It's bothersome to the neighborhood, and it's bothersome to me when there were explicit instructions, "This is important." Number two, I think a big part of our history is redlining in the city of Des Moines and what happened to our neighborhoods. In Ward Two, there are quite a few neighborhoods that were redlined back in the 50s, and I think that history should be taught. People need to understand that we built neighborhoods to keep people in those neighborhoods. You've got state highways on one border, state highway on another border, railroad tracks on another border. I mean, it was designed, and it's not history that we're proud of, but it's still history, and I think that it should be recognized. When I sat on Polk County Housing Trust Fund Board, you know, they had the whole redlining presentation. That should be...everybody in this city should know what happened and how it happened, and I don't see any mention of that anywhere at any time, and that's bothersome to me.
I apologize if we didn't reach you. We did try to reach out the best we could and try to get as many people involved in the process. I'm not familiar with the curbs, so I can't speak to that. The...I think the redlining, I believe we actually...you know, we had a lot of discussions that involved that, our history and the good and the bad of things that happened in our past throughout this process, and the advisory committee was very...I think we spent a great deal of time at those meetings, so very cognizant of that. I mean, I think we can look to see if, in the existing conditions section, really a lot of the plan is looking at how do we...how do we take steps to do a better job moving forward and what kind of action items can lead us in that path? And so we didn't cover every subject matter. You know, it's not a document...the document isn't a historical, you know, survey of Des Moines or in our history. It's more of just kind of a guide of moving forward.
I get that, but it is history.
That...I've served on the committee, so it was brought up, but this was really to have a guide because this format that they use really broadens the scope, so those kind of things get preserved.
Well...
So it's not about...but I mean, it's setting the plan forward to protect those entities, whether it be just neighborhoods or whether it be something that happened, so it isn't just a building they're saving, which has kind of been the process before. It was to preserve the culture and different aspects that have come up throughout our community. So it's a guide to ensure that we protect going forward.
And I...yeah, and that's where that word "intangible history," I think, is really relevant to...it was a big part of the discussion, is, you know, thinking just beyond...the built environment is, you know, is central to our sense of place. So we're not walking away from the notion of, you know, buildings and places being historic, you know, the built environment. But I think what we've learned in time is that a lot of why people feel attached to a place is really the stories and the events, and redlining it as an event of things that have happened.
It's an event.
And so it's...
I just ask that all council members be included. I mean, have these conversations with people that are familiar with the history. You know, those steel curbs will never be replaced. They will never, ever be replaced. And they sat right there at the Union Park, and they're gone. That piece of history is gone, and it will never be able to be brought back.
So I can speak to the steel curbs briefly, and engineering was in that conversation and talked to the neighborhood about the possibility of putting those back in as steel curbs, and there was not interest from the neighborhood to put those back in. So those...that's why those were not...
That's not the people that I talked to.
Well, I'd gladly take those names because that was the input that they did receive. So feel free to give me...
That's the council person, I said. It's important that we preserve this for our neighborhood.
It's...right, but that's not what the neighborhood wanted.
Well, if I...so this involves Jack Darty's house and...or the curbs in front of his house. And so I think he was hoping that the...that he could just have the curbs to put in his backyard or something, and somehow that didn't get communicated. So it's unfortunate, but is there a lesson learned on this that, oh, the contractor needs to, you know, not haul the steel curb away, but leave it in Jack's front yard or in his driveway so he could have it? The second thing I wanted to note is that...so I served briefly as an interim council member, and my first meeting was to approve tearing down of the Fifth Street Bridge. And so that inspired me to work with Christine Hensley and some other interests in saving that bridge, and I just want everyone to know that on Friday, September 15th, is going to be the 125th anniversary celebration of that bridge, a dinner on the bridge, and to celebrate the saving of that bridge and also the Little Italy community. So it's going to be a terrific evening. There's one well-known Italian restaurateur who's involved in that meal that evening. So Friends of Des Moines Parks has organized this celebratory evening for a bridge that was scheduled to be torn down, so...
I think they originally called the Jackson Street Bridge.
Well, and there's no Jackson Street in Des Moines anyway, so...it was originally called the Southwest Fifth Street Bridge over the Raccoon River, so we've gone back to the original name. It's a bridge of many names, but anyway. So that's how the city was involved, and we're just going to tear it down, so...
I think the lesson learned is, and Stacy hit on it in some of the goals is...or the...excuse me, the action items, is that we really need to think collaboratively. You know, we...it's not just...the responsibility of historic preservation isn't just like it's, oh, that's the historic commission, those that serve on that commission's responsibility or our responsibility. It's everybody's, citywide. And so that would be my lesson learned, both from the events that you've described, but also what came out of this document. And so we're going to try to instill that in others that we work with moving forward.
Opportunities for improvement, I guess.
We all need, you know, you all as well in that process, so...
Joe, Joe had his hand up, and then we can come back to you.
Go ahead. I haven't seen his hand.
I just had just a couple of comments and questions. So will you be going back through some of the older buildings now and taking a look and see if they meet the criteria to fit into this program, or how is that going to work going forward?
Yeah, that's really...the first thing that we're really hoping to do as an implementation activity is put together the funding to do a citywide survey. And so, you know, Stacy alluded to it a little bit in her presentation, but the, you know, survey process, really the fundamental part of it is documenting buildings and places out there that maybe we haven't picked up yet in survey, you know, survey work. What we've done in the past with my experience here has been more focused, you know, we've done some survey work on Victorian neighborhoods and craftsmen neighborhoods, but we haven't really done a citywide survey, definitely not one that's been looked a little bit more culturally. And then so that survey work, you get an inventory of what you have, and then that can be kind of taking that leap of, okay, maybe we have a district or an area that's worthy of being on the National Register of Historic Places, which is a largely honorary designation. So, you know, that might lead to some new districts being established or individual buildings. And then, of course, all our local historic districts are founded off of National Registered Districts, so, you know, potentially down the road, you could see maybe some nominations for that. So the shorter answer to your question is yes. What we hope to do is kind of leads towards that.
Go ahead. Joe's got more.
Go ahead.
So like, for instance, let's use the Fairgrounds hardware, you know, as that building deteriorated so bad, you know, there was...I mean, we had to take action on it. So is this going to help with buildings that are vacant and possibly could be on this registry, but no one's maintaining it, and then all of a sudden, we get into a situation to where it's crumbling and there's a, you know, a health and safety issue? What do we do at that point, and will this program actually help?
Unfortunately, you know, designate...I mean, if it became locally designated, then we have design control, we have the ability to, when change happens. But what's...what's missing there is we don't really have the...through historic preservation tools, we don't have like a maintenance aspect. I know there's... I know there's been discussions about it, like a maintenance code, which would be a huge historic preservation tool in the sense of providing a mechanism to force people to maintain their assets that really, you know, are an asset to them, but also an asset to the greater public.
And we've talked about a commercial maintenance code, but we've talked about a maintenance code and residential.
A property maintenance.
For years, and I'm not sure where we're at with that in the timeline we are starting at.
I think that's the element that's missing.
Because we've talked about it for years, so I just wondered where.
Yep, and so.
I don't know where we're at in the process, because I know this has been a point of discussion for years.
Right, and the, the plan was to get eye on in place first, which is the safety net. And so now that we feel that that's where you're into that, that we're feeling comfortable that we can do the research, which the staff have started on the maintenance codes that already exist in Iowa, and there are quite a few.
Okay.
And so we're going to blend the best parts that we can and bring to you what our thoughts are here. Probably in a couple of months, maybe three, three or four months.
Okay, thank you.
Tony.
I was just going to bring up the, the maintenance code. I think that's critical to the buildings to preserve. And it's not, you have to keep it, it's just general basic roof structure so that we don't get into the point where we have to tear down things that are historically significant. But this really is the plan to be the roadmap to get these things done. And it's not just buildings, it's the community's events, things like that. So that's what this plan is to go forward, that we do remember and keep in line.
So if we do create other buildings that haven't been a part of that, you know, I look at, you know, possibly Agrazianos. It's been there for years. It's, you know, significant to, you know. But, so if they go to change things there or add on or redo it, do they have to go through SHPO at that point?
Uh, no, if, I mean, if it, if a building ends up on the National Register, the only time there's a design review process is if you're using federal and some state funding. It's, the National Register is largely honorary. I mean, buildings get tore down, unfortunately, all the time that are designated. It's when it's locally designated that we have like a design review process. So we have the three local historic districts, Riverbend, part, whoops, excuse me, part of the Riverbend neighborhood, Sherman Hill, and then the Owleshead neighborhood. And then we have about 30 local landmarks that reside outside the districts that we review as well. But that, you know, it's somewhat, our processes are somewhat set up, so you, you're select, self-selecting to participate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And May, if I can just add one thing. I'm just getting a text from the Union Park Neighborhood Association, and they say that is absolutely not true, that they were not notified and asked if they wanted the curbing. So I'm just letting you know, that's what I'm, that's what my text message is just saying.
All right, anybody have anything else?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the Youth Advisory Board update.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members. We're back here again with the fully formed Youth Advisory Board. Again, thanks so much to you all for not only approving the change ordinance that was recommended by the task force, but also supporting the functioning of the reestablished Youth Advisory Board. The board members that were recently approved are here to do an update, provide an update to you all. And I'm not going to be speaking much, but I will be available to answer any questions. What they're doing is, they're basically all presenting, so there will be a lot of them coming up here, just so that they have an opportunity to be in front of you. But the presentation itself is not that very long. So first, I'm going to invite Bradley to come up here and introduce herself, and then do her portion of the presentation, and then please invite the next person after that.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Bradley Gross, and thank you for the opportunity to be here presenting. This past term for the Youth Advisory Board has been very welcoming for creativity and advocacy for our youth. We've all been very excited to, you know, start kicking things and start things up. This next term, we have a lot in store that we hope you guys will approve on. And so today we will be talking about who we are, what we would like to do, why we are together, our accomplishments this past year, the meetings that we've had during our term, and our recommendations, and then finally, our closing. So we shall get started. And I invite Natalia to come speak.
Hello. Hello, my name's Natalia, and I go to North. So now I'll be able to inform you guys all about the history of the Youth Advisory Board. The first Youth Advisory Board for the City of Des Moines was first established in July 18th of 2005. And then the Youth Advisory Board Task Force was, that was created in 2021. And the Youth Advisory Board Task Force consisted of Des Moines' youth, 12, 12 youth members between the ages of 14 and 18. The Youth Advisory Board Task Force of Des Moines also reviewed the existing Youth Advisory Board ordinance and learned about other similar boards about, around the country. The, Des Moines City Council approved the recommended, recommended changes to the Youth Advisory Board ordinance in the late 2020 as well. And finally, sorry, the Des Moines City Council, sorry. And finally, the Youth Advisory Board was also formed on January 19, 2023. And the four, the first group of Youth Advisory Board members were appointed by City Council on January 9th of 2023. And now I would like to call Alante up to the podium. Thank you.
Well, good morning, my name is Alante. I'm a senior at North High School, and I'm going to be talking about our meetings that we had over our term. So the Youth Advisory Board consists of 14 members, and during our term, we had six regular meetings, six special meetings, a six community conversations on different topics. Six regular meetings consist of planning of what we want to do over the term. Our special meetings are usually things we have to plan over at the last minute when we have events coming up. And community conversations was the dialogues that we have with community to hear about issues from other youth members or anyone who was present to talk about those issues. And now I would like to call up Akaya.
Hello, my name's Akaya. My responsibility today is to tell you about the YAB's purpose. Our purpose as the Youth Advisory Board is to advocate for the youth of Des Moines. We aspire to show young people the importance of local government while also inspiring youth to get engaged in their community to make an impact. Our main goal is to identify issues that the youth of Des Moines currently face and to solve these issues by utilizing youth engagement. By increasing youth engagement, we also hope to bring unity to youth and non-youth communities to help create a better environment for all citizens of Des Moines. Now I would like to bring up Reagan, Roosevelt High School.
Hi, guys, my name is Reagan Park, and I'm going to be a rising senior at East High this year. So my mission here is to explain our mission and our goal here with YAB. First, I want to thank the Public Information's Office for this flyer they created to welcome more youth onto our Youth Advisory Board. Overall, our mission is to be a voice for youth in our local government and just create a positive environment for them. We feel that we should be involved in different information and decisions, sorry, that are made in the government. And our goal is to overall, like, foster that sense of belonging for youth and make youth feel involved. Next, I would like to welcome Trey up.
Just a quick question. So one of the pages says it's your youth ages 14 and 18. And then on this flyer, it says 14 to 25. And so what did we finally land on, on the age range?
I believe there is different criteria because we have to have a certain amount of 14 to 18, and then a certain amount of like 20 to 25. So we just have youth overall underneath that umbrella, but there's like different branches that we have to put with those.
So there's another group of youth that are 18 to 25, or?
Not at this time, no, we only have like seniors and juniors.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, my name's Hannah, I'll be a senior at Roosevelt, and I'm going to be talking about some of the accomplishments we've had this year. So a lot of the things we've been working on is planning our community conversations. And at each of these community conversations, there was a different topic that we were going to be addressing at each of these meetings. And we actually put a lot of thought into choosing the different topics at these meetings. And I think the topics we chose kind of reflect overall arching issues that matter to youth. The purpose of these meetings was to gather information from other youth because the Youth Advisory Board doesn't just reflect the opinions of the people serving on this board, but ultimately, we were hoping to collect more opinions from more youth to reflect the opinions of youth across the city. So our, one of our first meetings was on economic opportunities. It was held at the library downtown. And we were talking about ways that youth can access training to job, for jobs, and more knowledge about economic opportunities. And we got a lot of good information about some programs that already exist. But now moving forward, we have to think about how can we make youth aware about these economic opportunities? And the second meeting we had, community dialogue, was about, in regards to mental health. This was held at the Eastside Library. We, again, it was a very similar message of, we have programs that already exist, but youth are not aware of them. So, and again, mental health is something that really matters to youth, so this was one we wanted to emphasize especially. And then the third community dialogue we had was on housing and homelessness. This was at the Franklin Library. And we had an individual come who had previously been experiencing houselessness. So it was really impactful to be hearing from people who have gone through these experiences and get those firsthand knowledge about what we can do to help these individuals in the future. And I think all these community dialogues, we wanted to have them across the city so we can get people's impact from across the city. And this, these are some of the main accomplishments we've had throughout the year. So I'm going to have Natalia come up and talk about the other three community dialogues we've had.
So our fourth one would be climate and environment. And for that community dialogue, we had, it was actually in that second picture right there, in that little circle that we're in. And we had amazing ideas that were brainstormed. We were able to come up that we need to use social media to draw more attention to climate change issues and creating a community cleanup day, recyclable bags in stores like Aldi, or recycling composting programs, especially for apartments since there aren't bins enough for apartments or complexes. And then also, one would be community safety and health. There we talked about support systems in school, starting from kindergarten to sec, to 12th grade. And we also talked about the Second Chance Program and how to make it more beneficial to the youth. And also understanding reasons why youth are pushed towards the violence instead of staying in schools, and how we can expand community fridges, like throughout churches, libraries, all throughout the community. And another thing we talked about was a way to employ juvenile offenders so that we don't have them stay in the system. Once they're released, they always come back. So that is the main reason why youth are always involved in violence. And then our last one is LGBTQIA inexperience. This one, we didn't have that many people come, but we did, we were able to brainstorm a lot of good ideas. And one of the things, we're changing the curriculum and making books more exclusive within the schools. And another one was more presentation of LGBTQIA plus genders and gender starting in elementary, since we, since in high school, you don't really get to learn more about that. But if you were to be exposed to that at a young age, you would have more of a chance to learn more about that. And then more resources for support as well. And then our last one would be more events throughout the year for LGBTQIA plus, not only having Pride Festival. And this would be something more annual instead of just a Pride Festival, like more times a year, if that makes sense. And then that is our last one, thank you.
What school do you go to?
North.
North?
Yes.
Good morning, my name is Trey Jackson. I attend Roosevelt High School, and I'm going to be introducing our topics for discussion in terms of our recommendations that we heard over our appointment time. So the first one that we had was visibility and engagement with Des Moines youth. So this is probably one of our only recommendations that we heard throughout our entire time, throughout every single youth dialogue we had, we heard the same thing, in that we have to increase the amount of information that we're getting to youth and the way in which we're getting that to youth. So of course, youth don't really read the newspaper, and paper mail is relatively obsolete when you're talking about a 17-year-old. So we came up with social media. So we have to utilize social media more, especially in terms of city government, getting youth engaged with city government, as well as getting the programs to those youth. This is especially true when we're talking about our mental health recommendations and our community safety recommendations as well. The second one that we have for you is fairness in the juvenile justice system. So this was mainly brought up during our community safety and wellness conversation. And we primarily focused on the Second Chance Program, since we believe that that had a big impact with youth specifically. The first thing that we discussed was talking about the removal of certain barriers that prevent youth from getting into that program, as well as being successful in that program as well. In addition to that, we discussed adding more culturally relevant diversion tactics. So a lot of the tactics that are utilized with youth right now are the same ones when it was first developed. And of course, the issues that are facing youth, that are facing every community member, is ever-changing. So making sure that the tactics that we're utilizing in this program better fit the youth that we're trying to support. With that, I'm going to invite Hadley to do our next one.
Hello, everyone, my name's Hadley Harvey. I'm an up-and-coming junior at Roosevelt. And I would like to start and talk about healthness, houselessness. So like one of our previous members, Hannah, said, the dialogue on houselessness was very impactful. In response to the dialogues and amongst our own discussions as a board, we came to the consensus that youth homelessness was an issue apparent in our community. Throughout the discussion on its occurrence and how we can better support youth going through that experience, we decided that one of our goals was going to be to host resource fairs for houseless youths and connect houseless youth with service providers. Through these goals, we are recognizing youth in these scenarios and are offering our assistance and support through their hardship, something that we all agreed was very important. And with that, I would like to call upon Fortosa to do the next one.
Hello, my name is Firdus Mohammed. And our next priority would be belonging. Like our other priorities, this was a reoccurring idea. And we want the youth in Des Moines to feel more of like a belonging in their city. And we can see this happening through beautification, having things like more public art and nice scenery can add to this. And in addition to that, we would like to have more youth-friendly areas where youth can hang out with other young people and just feel safe in a sense of belonging. And our last priority for 2023 would be the economic opportunities. As you heard before, we had a community dialogue on this and felt it was very important. We'd love for the youth in Des Moines to have. love for the youth in Des Moines to have more of economical opportunities and supports that break down barriers, um, to success and fostering a more widespread opportunity. Um, and one way we think this can happen is through a pension program.
Roosevelt High School, I'm a senior. Um, and now I'd like to pass it on to Hayat.
Hello, my name is Hayat Yemura. I'm going to be an incoming junior at Roosevelt High School. As we wrap up our presentation today, we just want to say thank you for your support and your time today, and also throughout the year. We also want to thank the community members and the youth who came to our community conversations and shed light on issues and concerns that they believe are important, that has helped us, um, shape our goals and our priorities for the new, um, year. And we hope to tackle a lot of those issues and continue to have your guys' support as we do that. Thank you. Um, do you guys have any questions for us?
Anybody?
What a great job. Wow, they were all such good speakers.
Thank you all. Appreciate your update.
Carl's got one.
Carl, I'm sure you have something.
I did, yes. So, I understand that through state law, that there has to be a homeless, um, contact person at all of our schools, from elementary to high school. So, do all of the members of the Youth, um, Advisory Board know who the contacts are at each of the high schools?
Very recently, um, when we actually had that conversation for, um, to, to talk about houselessness, a lot of them actually didn't know that each, every school had one. But now, that we have that information, uh, I believe majority of you know. Um, and some schools, there are either the school community coordinators, and, and others that are just dedicated staff. Trey, you were nodding, were you gonna respond?
I saw some nods of hits there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, performance.
Um, so I can really only, only speak to the community school coordinator at Roosevelt. Um, I work a lot with our community school coordinator. I just president a lot of the clubs that she sponsors. Um, and realistically, um, I, I did know, um, that we had a liaison. Um, unfortunately, with a lot of the resources, especially within public education, um, they are so strained to the point that she might be doing five other jobs while also trying to balance out being the liaison for that school. So, while we might be having, um, somebody that is dedicated, they simply don't have the resources, um, the time to dedicate everything to just that role, um, because they're also balancing out doing, you know, twenty different other clubs and activities, also being a school interventionist. Um, so it would be impossible to have the amount of dedication necessary, especially within DMPS and the amount of houseless, um, youth that we have within DMPS. It would just be an impossibility to, um, incorporate all of that support that is necessary.
But you at least know who that contact is at the high schools.
I, yes, I know the one at Roosevelt, yeah.
Okay. So, did I hear any kids from, let's see, we heard from four of the five high schools?
Lincoln.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, anything else? Anyone?
I'll actually add one more thing, um, is that, so for the Youth Advisory Board, we're actually taking, accepting applications on a rolling basis. So, if you are connected with, um, youth in the community, please, uh, encourage them to apply. Um, because what we're doing is there, as you may recall, the maximum number is forty-seven. So, they could, uh, there may be more young people appointed to serve on the Youth Advisory Board, because we do recognize we have, um, some high schools that are overrepresented than the others. So, we want to make sure that there's a bit of a balance.
You don't have anybody from Hoover either, do you?
Not this round. No, no, no. But we did, we actually went to Hoover, uh, for some schools, we actually went into the schools, uh, it was a matter of them either not applying or, um, maybe us not reaching, you know, hard enough. So, we, 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 we don't want to say, we tried, you know, we'll, we'll keep trying.
Will you do that in the fall for the two schools that aren't represented? Will you go in and-
Yeah.
And try to do some recruiting with, with some of the kids that you have?
Yeah, I, we definitely will rely on the expertise of our board members to go back into schools that have, that are not represented, as well as the age group, um, that's kind of missing right now. So, yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Anything might be important for us, if we know any of the administration people in those schools, to-
Right.
See if we can encourage them to get the youth engaged.
Yes. The community and school coordinators, they do do a lot of that work and engagement, like the students said. So, I think getting to them would help too. And just awareness, this is really newly formed. I, as more awareness comes up-
Yeah.
It will help too. And youth, and social media is where they work.
Yeah.
Get it out.
And I'll follow up with, uh, Principal Williamson at Lincoln and see if he has some students in mind.
Yeah, for sure.
Or encourage him to find some.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you all. Appreciate your presentations, uh, well thought out, and, uh, it's encouraging to see our Youth Advisory back in action. So, thank you all. Unless anybody has anything, uh, any, we don't have a closed session, do we, Mr. Attorney? I don't think we do. So, uh, for those that are excited about it, we'll see you, um, at about, uh, four forty-five.